Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals in the town of Beekman. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the emergency exits are behind us to our right, your left. The doors in which you entered immediately to your left and in the back of the room. So on tonight's agenda, February 2nd, 2023, we are here for a public hearing for Sparrow's Nest. The applicant, Krista Jones, seeking an area variance on the corner of Clove Valley Road and Town Center Boulevard, grid number 6759-00-465462, Zone TC. The applicant was referred by the planning board and is seeking a 1.65 acre area variance from Section 155-42 Sub A of the town code, which requires a minimum lot size of five acres. Also seeking a 117.8 foot front yard setback from Area Variance 155-42E, which requires 100 foot and 155 Attachment 1 Schedule A of the town code, which requires 0 to 15 feet. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
A second?
Great.
Well, actually, I don't think the public hearing notices were sent out, so...
Right.
So this can only be an informational meeting?
Right.
There can't be anything to be decided on that?
Right.
So for the record, there is no public hearing this evening. Per Section 155-42 Sub E, which states the procedures of the town of Beekman, the public hearing will be adjourned at a later date. The applicant is here to provide an informational session for the zoning board of appeals. And the applicant is here.
Let's bring him forward for explanation.
Do you want us to present up here with this mic or not?
Present that one and then show us on the board.
Good evening. I'm Steve Whelan of Whelan Architecture. I'm also joined tonight by Krista Jones. She's the CEO and owner of Sparrow's Nest. Yeah, I do want to apologize. It was an oversight on my part about the mailings for the public hearing, for the ZBA. I do want to, I just want to state that I appreciate the board sticking around at least so we can have like an informational meeting. So before I get into like all the technical information, I'm just going to turn it over to Krista just to give you a little bit more background on the project, why we're doing this and why we're here tonight.
Good evening. Sparrow's Nest is a 501(c)(3) charity. Our anniversary is this year. We've been in existence this year for 10 years. And we started off by cooking for moms that had a cancer diagnosis in Duchess County. I started doing that after I lost a very dear friend of mine who had three small little babies that were the ages of my children. She became very sick very quickly. And I noticed there was a need in order for her to be fed, but for her to be fed safely. So as amazing as the community is wanting to come out and provide all these great meals, we knew that we needed to do it in a way that was less overwhelming for her. So we started feeding her once or twice a week and bringing her multiple meals at that time. Not long after Kathy passed away, I had four friends that were diagnosed with different types of cancer. I was working at a radio station doing a morning show and I felt that I was being nudged into a different direction. So we took all of the 401K money, don't ever do that, out of our account. And I said to my husband, I want to build a big kitchen on the back of our house. And I think after a couple of days, he agreed for us to do that. And that's kind of how we got started. Because when I first approached the community with this idea, it was met with a little bit of skepticism because nothing like this has really ever been done. People weren't sure how it was going to be funded, how it was going to work. And we really didn't have the capital in order to make it work. So we built something on the back of our home. Town of East Fishkill gave us all the variances and all of the approvals that we needed. And we were out of there for approximately two years, but it just became so big so fast that we moved the operations into the Summerlin Plaza. We opened up from feeding moms that had cancer to moms and dads that had cancer and ultimately families that had children 18 and under living in the home with a cancer diagnosis. It was still very hard for me to turn away people that did not have children under 18 living in the home, whether they just did not have children or they were senior citizens or like me, their children were now in college. So they aged out of the program. So we knew it was something we needed to do. When COVID hit, the food insecurities in the five counties that we feed increased. We noticed that we were not only making two meals a week, but we were providing supplemental groceries to 35% of our recipients. We feed now about 350 people. Before COVID, we were providing extra groceries to about 20% of our recipients. And we have had the calls for years asking us to expand and open up and just making sure that everyone was fed. So in order for us to do that, you know, we knew that it was time to make a move so that we can have a facility that was bigger, so that we can accommodate more people and still keep the integrity of our mission intact. So we reached out to the planning board to make sure that it was something that fit in this area. We are very quiet. We are not a storefront. We do not have people every day in and out of the facility, even though people do want us to sell the apple pies and our cookies. We're not going to do that. But we just want a place that is serene, that we can just do what we do best. And you know, if the public does want to step by and they want to, you know, sit at the garden and, you know, walk along the path where we have plenty of names of recipients that we have fed or have passed. We want them to be able to do that. So we were pleased that the town of Beekman, the planning board has been amazing. They were very welcoming to us. And we knew that the next step was we would have to come before you because there is a section of the code that, you know, we do not meet with almost three and a half acres. So that is why we're here. And Stephen feels really, really bad. He ASAP'd me to call him at like 5:30 tonight. I will say that Stephen has been, he donated all his time to not only be the architect on this job, but he's doing a lot of the engineering behind it. So I am not mad at all that he did not read that part of the application. It'll happen the way it's supposed to happen. But I just wanted to say, thank you for letting me come and talk. I don't know if you guys have any questions or if that's even something you would ask right now, where I can turn it back over to Stephen.
Pretty much. Thanks for the work you're doing. And yeah, if we let Steve get going, we can figure out and he can share with us, you know, where we're at for the variances you're going to be looking for. And we might be able to help each other on what direction you should go in.
Yeah, absolutely. So just to give you guys just a little bit of a breakdown of the building. So it's going to be a 7,000 square foot building. It's only one story. The areas are broken down into sort of 2,000 square feet. It's going to be offices and administration. Another 2,000 square feet, that's going to be the kitchen. And the remaining 3,000 square feet is going to be really for like storage, mechanical equipment and things like that. The reason that we have this positioned on the site the way we do is much to like what Krista was saying. This is not a public building. They really just need a place to set up camp, you know, to be able to provide all this food, you know, and cook it. And I've been to their facility that they have now over in the Summerlin Plaza. And yeah, they're just like this self-contained organization. So they need, they need a lot more room. So and there's not a lot of people going in and out of the doors. So when we were first looking at this site being right across the street from the Beacon Library, we just kind of wanted to like mirror image that. And then we've been working with Dan Kohler quite a bit. And I told him, you know, there are like contradictions within the zoning code, like the one about being 0 to 15 feet for the front yard setback for in the TC zone. But then because they're a non-for-profit organization, it's required to be further back.
Hundred, right.
So with that, so we said, all right, look, we're just going to mirror image what the library did. And then as far as like the acreage, yeah, that's all the property that was available. You know, if there was more, I'm sure they would have bought it so that we wouldn't need that variance. And plus they would have, you know, room for expansion. So with that one, it's kind of like an existing non-conforming variance that we're looking for. And then the other one, it's just, that's just how we just want to position the building. It just, it works out for their layout, for deliveries and then for the staff parking lot. So we, that we've got this situated on the site, that's, that's what's going to work out best for them.
With that said, you mentioned five counties. Could you please let us know what the counties are?
Sure. We deliver to all of Duchess County, all of Putnam County. We go into Orange County, almost to the middle town area. We are going to have to figure out when we move here. Our radius is 35 miles. We'll probably grandfather in whoever is already in that area. We might tweak it a little and pull back a tiny bit. Ulster County, we go into Kingston, all the way down to Kingston. And then we touch the tip of Northern Westchester County.
And if I may, what made you choose Beekman? I'm just wondering. I'm not sure that that is the most central location.
It's not necessarily the most central location, but we wanted a lot of acreage. We wanted a town that was willing to work with us. We had seen properties in other towns that would have held us up for quite a few years. We have to be out of our current space at the end of this year. So we really need to get moving. One of the towns that we had seen something in, it was a two to three year process. And we just, we couldn't wait that long. And it's the area. It's, it's something about it just being peaceful and serene. It's just, I don't know. For me, it grounds me and I need to stay grounded because there's a lot of amazing work we're doing. But you know, there's a lot of sad work that we do. So for us to have my employees in a setting that they can look out and there's just nothing there and it's quiet and they can take a breath, it's really important. I don't want to be on a busy street. We just need some tranquility. And we fell in love with the property when we saw it and then we just stopped looking.
How many employees did you say between?
So believe it or not, there's only three of us.
That would be for the administrative offices?
I'm sorry?
Administrative offices?
Administrative offices, there will be, we have three full timers. And we have a part timer that is our kitchen manager. We are going to have a conference area where if somebody wants to come in, we'll be able to put them. And you know, we are planning to have an extra office because I'm sure we'll expand, you know, we'd love to be able to have more employees at some point. Probably not in the near future.
How many kitchen staff? Just the part man manager?
It's myself and my kitchen manager. And we used to have about 15 kitchen staff before COVID. Now we have two. So we have two volunteers that come in two to three on Mondays. And they're there for about six hours and then they leave us. And Kristi and I stay for about another eight, nine hours to get it done.
How do you receive the food, you know, to prepare and the supplies?
So we receive the food once a week via a truck. That truck comes on Fridays sometime between 10 and 12:30. There's really very few other deliveries unless a farmer or someone says, you know, I have extra corn, can I drop it off? Or I have something extra or Pepsi has Doritos. But really, it's a once a week delivery.
And that truck has most of the supplies that you will be using, correct?
That truck has everything.
Everything.
Everything from the tins that we use to the napkins that we need, to the food that we use as well.
And how is then the food distributed? In other words, who's, who does the delivery of the food?
So we have seven volunteers that come in on a Tuesday. And those seven volunteers disperse the food throughout Duchess County. And then we have a small refrigerated truck that the food for the other four counties goes into. And that food is brought to each county. And there is a meetup space where the volunteers meet in each county. And they distribute the food into their own counties.
When you say small truck, refrigerated, how small? Could you give me an idea?
It's here.
I beg your pardon?
It's here. It's outside. It's, I don't know. What would you consider? It's able to go on the Taconic.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, bigger than a pickup truck. Yes, all right. Just have an idea. Okay, thank you. I appreciate all of your answers.
Merci. Sorry. I had some questions, but...
Yeah, yeah. Can you talk to us a little bit about your funding? How, how your businesses and projects are funded? You are a 501(c)(3), so that gives you very generous tax exempt status. You know, can you talk to us a little bit about some of your funding? Not disclosing anything, just, you know, some of your funding sources, private, public, a combination thereof?
Absolutely. I would say we bring in about a million dollars a year. We need about $900,000 to operate. So my goal has always been to go over at least $100,000, which we have saved over the last 10 years. So we're going into this project with a million dollars in reserves, which we plan to use. I have another $275,000 committed. I have grant requests out for, I think, $750,000 more. Two of those look really good. So I think those will be coming in in the next couple of months. But we're really not putting anything forward for the capital project to our donors. One, because I think we'll be able to fund it without asking donors for dollars. Two, because I'm afraid of donor fatigue. Our donors are amazing and they give all the time for various different reasons. So a lot of the funding for capital campaign is already there, which is the only reason that I decided last year to move forward with this. I had a goal in mind. We are funded through a bunch of different sources. Some grants and foundations for operating, probably only 100,000 of that. Corporate sponsors, somewhere between 150 and 200,000 more. We do a destination run that is amazingly popular. When I say the word run, you could walk. But I say run quite a bit, which scares people. That, that destination run brings in anywhere from 300 to 450,000 dollars of the income. And then we do things like apple pies and t-shirts. And we lose recipients, I hate to say it. And when we do, the community that knows and loves them...
Yeah.
They're amazing to us because we took care of their loved ones. We will receive hundreds of thousands of dollars
Understood.
just from families.
Yeah, so how, what would you say you're, because you know, we're in a stressful environment right now economically. What would you say you have in terms of runway? In, in, in reserves, would you say you have a year, six months?
We keep a year in reserves. That's, that is above and beyond the money that we have in reserves for capital.
Okay. I, I ask that, you know, with really in the back of our heads, at the back of my head is, you know, at some point, if, if, if the situation becomes very, very stressed and cash is running low, now you have to exit that building and exit. And all the variances are approved and everything is approved. And two years later, now you have to go somewhere else, you know?
So before COVID hit, by the grace of God, we had put a plan together. My board had wanted to know what a contingency plan was, if there was indeed an emergency.
Yeah.
I will say this, though, during COVID, we received probably more income than in any other year because the donors knew the people we were feeding were the most compromised. So they really stepped up. However, in that plan, there is plenty that we can do without physically spending money on food. Things with local farmers, getting our food donated, different programs. So we do have contingency plans in place where this $900,000 operating expense really no longer becomes that if we do get in an emergency situation.
Thank you, Krista.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Actually, in the future, are you going to make a garden so you can grow your own stuff?
Yes.
Okay. And then, did you have to think of going to the high school? Because they have a lot of culinary students that probably want an internship.
So we do have a lot of high school students that volunteer. I would love for us to be able to have some hoop houses on, you know, at some point, grow our own things and sustain our own food sources. But I love the, the opportunity that we have our own place because with COVID, we've really had to dial down on our volunteerism. And this just opens it up if kids want to come out or learn how to plant. Or, you know, the stuff that we used to see at the farm that's right up the road from Knoxon that ended up, you know, just, just being able to cultivate a different lifestyle. And we encourage kids especially to come out and volunteer because we know that, you know, what we imprint on them is what they, they bring into the world, right? So absolutely.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
Yeah, no. Ask away.
Okay, now I'm going to use your engineer. I got to just address a couple of things to give him stuff to think about and us stuff to think about when we meet the next time. So I see that your lot coverage is 5%, which is maxed for the lot coverage, which is perfect. You're right on the money. So the variance you're asking for with the TC zoning and supplemental zoning, it's kind of unclear whether you need the variance or don't need the variance. But you have two front yards because they both join two different roads. So if you need the variance for one, you would need the variance for the other, right? And we only have the variance for the one. So we either need to amend that so you have the variance you were requiring and a variance for both, or we would have to decide that the supplement overrides the TC zone, which I'm more inclined at this point, without, you know, conversing with the rest of the board at the moment, that the supplemental actually does override the TC zone. That's usually what the supplemental is for, is to say this for charitable organization, we require this regardless of that particular zoning. So Adam, Mercin can chime in here whether, you know, we agree or we have some other issue with that. I'm kind of inclined that the charitable organization supplement in our code, the 155-42, actually overrides the TC.
Super sees that. Yeah, well, we're, we're getting a positive nod from our town attorney.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically the way it works. You know, the other thing that's kind of strange. So yeah, usually the supplemental.
Yes.
Because it's a particular criteria that's associated with, it's a special permit use.
Right.
It's not a, it's not strictly a site plan. So as a special permit use, that would be an underlying condition to get the special permit. What is somewhat strange is that the town center contemplates smaller lots with buildings on the, right up on the street.
Right.
You know, on-street parking.
Right.
But this use is specifically permitted in the zone.
For charitable, right.
So the, the, the underlying mechanics of the town center and the standards that were applied, you know, realistically, don't necessarily meet that criteria. And, you know, I don't, looking briefly, you know, most of the, most of the area in the town center, the lots are not five acres.
Right.
So, you know, I think when drafting the code, you know, that was kind of an oversight in that. You could have certainly put a note in. And, and again, this type of, you've got a library across the street.
That's not zero acres.
Yeah, that's not five acres, yeah.
So, you know...
So it sounds like the path of least resistance would, would be the supplemental.
Right.
Yeah. And, and so that would, if, if the board makes a finding that the supplemental setback requirements trump the 0 to 15, then that variance is not required. That's just an interpretation as to what controls. So the only thing you'd really be looking at is the acreage issue.
Yeah, the acreage, yeah.
Which, again, you know, it's a, it's a permitted use in the town, in the town center district, but there's really not any five acre, you know, parcels in the five acre district.
Right, right.
It's, it, you know...
While we're talking on that matter with the five acre minimum for charitable organizations, I was trying to, I spoke with John Fisati from the planning board and I spoke with Dan briefly on it. And what it seems to be is that five acre minimum for charitable is so that we don't have charitable organizations taking two one acre lots off for church housing or whatever. And we have all these little properties taken off the tax rolls. So churches would be inclined to five acres, put their church on and have their little clerical house where the living would be.
Right, right.
The parson.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So that is, that's pretty much why they put a five acre minimum on it. Here, and I'll tell you, that's exactly why ZBAs are in place. Because if this was a case where you were asking for a church, I'd be more inclined to say, I would probably be a little bit inclined to be a little negative to it only because we have so many churches in the area. But with your services, there's not another one around. And, and it's, it's an asset to the community. I know everybody spoke highly from the planning board right down to the offices downstairs about it. So, but if, if there was three, four others doing exactly what you were doing and we were in jeopardy of losing property to tax rolls by giving that variance of smaller, you know, we would probably be in a different view mindset wise. So, I mean, we're only giving our thoughts forward because we got to meet again. I can't give you specifics. We can't vote on it. But we're inclined to believe that the supplemental does override the TC zoning. And you already have more than 100 feet on both sides of the road front inch, which is both front properties. I would, you know, just check with the, the planning board again and make sure that if you, if you are going to ask for a variance, that you ask for it on both sides, right?
Yeah, just, just cover your bases.
Yeah, yup. Because you don't want to get here and have it for, the planning board say, yeah, you have to have it for the TC zoning. And we give a variance for one side, but you don't have it on the other. There, there's a whole other issue. If we made you go 15 and 15 for any building in the TC zoning, whether it was charitable or not, that means that building would have to be down in the lower corner on both roads, which gives us a lot of problems for stormwater runoff and other issues. So, you know, I mean, personally, I think we ran it, Mercy wasn't here when we did Dollar General. We gave him a sap back for the same reason. And all the other buildings that are previously in that TC zoning are already backed off way past the 15.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think the two things you're asking for are, you know, I think you did a great job with the planning board. You don't have any reason to believe in the future that you would be growing. I know you can't grow wider because you've already covered the maximum percentage. But you have no desire to go up, right?
We originally, like the first application, I think, before we even went to planning board, we were at 5,000.
Okay.
And Krista and I kept talking and talking and like, look, let's go in for the max. Let's go in for everything. And yet it does max out the zoning requirements.
Yes.
Especially like with the undisturbed or versus disturbed. I mean, like you're right there.
Yup.
So I said, let's go in for the max so that you don't have to worry about expansion. And that's why we have 3,000 square feet left over.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, money storage. So if there's going to be any expansion, it's going to be internally.
Okay. Yeah, only because if we expanded the building, it would require more park and we'd be, then we'd be having...
Another discussion, yeah.
Yeah, right back here.
Another discussion, yeah.
We're only doing this process once.
I hear you. I hear you.
No, I'm...
Nothing against the board, but yeah.
No, I, I would do the same thing if it were you. Again, we're not voting. This is just conversational purposes and informational purposes. But I, I think... but I think some of the concerns of the board were, you know, the amount of traffic that would come in and out of the facility, and, you know, the trucks and, you know, just the number of vehicles that could potentially, you know, cause some traffic in that area in the morning. Certainly the financial stresses and contingencies, which you've addressed, and some of the other items, which, you know, were on the minds of the board. You know, so I think at this time, unless anybody has any additional questions? Comments, concerns?
Just like to thank you for the work you're doing. I hope that the Lord keeps blessing you.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, then I think at this time, it probably makes the most sense in light of the lack of the mailings and the public hearing to adjourn this meeting until the future date. The next que, the serious question for you, Krista, and your team is, you know, we meet on the first Thursday of every month, so the next meeting here would be March 2nd. Today's February 2nd. February is a short month. Do you reasonably believe that you can accomplish this over the next few days, next couple of weeks, and then be prepared on March 2nd? If not, we're happy to adjourn this to April. And that's not to push this off to give you the time that you need and the comfort that you need to get it done. But if you're, if you're telling us that you can get this done by March?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the mailings will go in, go out, and be received back, and I will bring them to the March, is it March 2nd you said?
March 2nd.
Okay.
Yep, it's the first Thursday of every month. Okay. Okay.
And again, my apologies to the board, but I definitely, I'm speaking for Krista, and I definitely appreciate you guys sticking around and having the meeting tonight.
Sure.
Sure.
Well, we would anyway, but... They would be very formal and very, you know, regimented, but that's, you know, we would have done this anyway. But again, my concern, and I think I speak on behalf of our board, is to, you know, be certain that we can get your mailings out in time and then be back here on March 2nd prepared, so we don't have to adjourn again.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, if you, when you send them out, if you just reach out to Colleen, she'll reach out to Mercer and let him know that they went out, and he'll know, you know, to be looking for that.
I'll do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Amazing. Well, thank you for your time this evening. Thanks for coming out here and sharing your story with us. Great. So at this time tonight, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Minutes to approve from last meeting?
Meeting is adjourned.